Six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. If you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
First amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Governor Turner.
Madam Mayor and all the great people of the City Council and to all the wonderful residents of Allen Park. It's a great time to be alive, it's a great time to be a resident of the city of Allen Park. Merry Christmas to everyone. Let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you this evening and we thank you for this time of year. We thank you for the birth of his son who put "Merry" in Christmas. Bless Lord God, these beautiful people. Give us a wonderful holiday season with Christmas and the upcoming new year. Be what? Thus. Amen.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas. Michael, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Present.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Valerius has asked to be excused. Councilman Nick.
Here.
Pro-Town Estimer.
Present.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes?
Correction, Mayor.
Correction?
Are... I would like to make a motion to change the agenda. Is this where I do this?
You could do it before the item. Or you could do it now, you could see.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll just do it now. I want to make a motion to change the agenda to when we vote for the board and committee commission appointments to separate beautification, Board of Ethics and Festivities Commission members separate from the rest of the recommended list. Others can be as listed.
Can you give me those again, please?
That is beautification, Board of Ethics and Festivities. I'd like those done separately by individual. And the rest as is.
Okay, so the individuals who made the original motion and seconded, is this satisfactory to you?
Well, he's...
It was Nancy Nick made the motion and Mr. Marcos seconded to approve the agenda as is.
Correction. Gary Schleck made the motion.
No, you made the original motion to accept the agenda. Gary made the motion to change it and remove certain items from it. So coming back...
Well, he's asking to divide a question, basically. So he would need a support and then... Yeah, and I don't think dividing a question is two-thirds. I think it's just a simple majority.
Okay, so what are we doing at this point, Mike? I'm asking for a motion to amend the agenda as proposed by Mr. Schleck.
Yes, but his proposed motion is to basically divide a question on the agenda. So he needs a second to divide the question before you could adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, that's on...
All right, who wants to second Mr. Schleck's motion?
I'll second.
Now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from December 12th?
Wait, Mayor, now you gotta back up. That's successful. Now we gotta go back to the agenda. All in favor of the amended agenda with separating beautification, Board of Ethics and Festivities from the organizational business A1. You could call the question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is carried.
All right, here's another confusing one, and I apologize. Somebody caught on the meeting that during the last meeting, we did not finish after the administrators' report. So that does leave a pending question out there. No reflection in these minutes needs to be made, but if you could, through the chair, there was a motion by Councilman Marcos and supported by Councilman Barr to accept and file the city administrators' operational updates, reports, documents, and submissions. And now, if you wouldn't mind calling the question, Mayor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have accepted the administrators' report from the last meeting.
Let it be known, we keep good records here at the city, okay?
Moving right along, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 12th as we have now completed them?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck. Second by Mr. Barr. Any other corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to our presentations, and the first one will be the swearing-in of our new hire firefighter, Trent Olson.
Good evening. I'm here to introduce firefighter Trent Olson. Trent, you'd show up or come on up? So we hired Trent back in July of 2023. Trent was a licensed paramedic. We hired him under the new MOU of hiring paramedics and then the city sending them and supporting them through the Fire Academy. So Trent was on the job for approximately five weeks, starting his probation, his learning. And then Trent was sent to Oakland Community College's Fire Academy where he spent 11 weeks learning the ins and outs of firefighting. Trent did a great job, graduated, and was flying colors. And he came back to us, and now he's working on taking what he learned and putting that aside and learning the Allen Park way. Because every city has their way, every department has their way. So he has to learn how to put it all together and work as a team with the crew. So far, he's doing a great job. We have the next close to six months to keep working and treating him like a probie and making him earn that badge and earn that shield, but he's doing a great job. So I'd like to...
Thank you.
Have Mr. Olson sworn in tonight.
All right. Unfortunately for you and the commissioners getting sworn in, we had a problem printing off the oath of office, so I don't have anything to hand you, but...
No worries.
This is a piece of paper, the oath is something that's sacred, so I'm not going to make you repeat after me. All you have to do is at the end say, "I swear," "I do," or "I affirm," it's whatever you feel comfortable with.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's a good... I know people stay at home, they can't hear me, so let me do this. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park free from partisan distinction or control and that you will perform the duties of full-time firefighter to the best of your abilities so help you God?
I swear.
All right, congratulations.
And before you all depart, which I know you are going to want to do, I will let the council make some brief comments. If we can start with Mr. Marcos.
Well, welcome, Trent. Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work and going to school and getting this all done, and we certainly need you, and we'll take good care of you, and you take care of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Barr.
I cannot say anything more than what Mr. Marcos has said. Thank you and welcome to the family.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schleck.
Just want to extend my thanks for you to join our department, our city, and then special thanks to your family that are going to worry more than anyone else out there. So thank you to them, and I look forward to you finally when you get your badge. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Estimer.
I had a private discussion with Trent and his family, and it turns out I know his mother from previous work experience. So thank you so much for choosing Allen Park, appreciate it.
Ms. Nick.
Hi, Trent. So I know I heard you have more learning to do, like another six months, but I'm sure you're going to do well and welcome to Allen Park, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And once again, thank you, and I look forward to more pancake breakfasts. And thank you all.
We'll let Plant Moran come up and prepare us for their audit presentation.
Well, it's a tough act to follow there, but we'll do our best. So good evening, my name is Bill Bricki with Plant Moran, I'm the audit partner in your account, and with me today is James Hopola, and we're here to talk about the audit for the year ended June 30, 2023. So we have covered all of these documents in detail with management and also with council in the study session, so my goal tonight is just to give a real brief overview of the audit here tonight. So before we get started, just want to take a quick minute and really thank your entire team for their assistance throughout the audit. You know, the process does take several months, and your team just does a great job helping us throughout the process, so we appreciate all the assistance there. So the first thing I want to comment on is one of our main deliverables to you as your auditor, and that's the opinion on your financial statements. So the city did receive an unmodified audit opinion, again in the current year, which essentially means the financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. So it's really the A-plus grade on the audit report, so happy to report that. We also had another audit that we did this year in addition to your financial statement audit. We did a compliance audit on your compliance with some of the federal grant money that you received. So the city did receive over $950,000 of federal grants in the current year, and when you have over $750,000, we have to do this separate compliance audit. So we did audit your compliance with the American Rescue Plan Audit Rules and Regulations, and happy to report that we did not have any audit findings and the city complied with all of the requirements there. So with that, we have prepared just a really brief summary of some of the general fund results that we'll go through here in the graph presentation. I'll have James kind of do that, and then we can conclude with any questions that you may have. So, James?
Thank you. This first graph here presents the city's general fund's revenue for the current and prior year. Total revenue was up $1.38 million or roughly 5.7%. As you can see, the city's largest source of revenue is property tax, which increased roughly $688,000 or 5% from prior year. That increase does approximate the city's taxable value. Milage rates remain the same from last year. As you look through the other revenue lines, the remaining components of revenue were pretty stable compared to last year. Moving on to the city's expenditures, so this slide here presents the expenditures of the general fund for the current and prior year. Expenditures were up $636,000 or 2.7%. Looking really high level at these two bars, there really haven't been any significant changes to the cost structure of the city. As you can see, the total expenditures have remained extremely consistent over the past couple of years, both in total and by each component. One item to point out is the Transfers Debt Service and Capital Outlay Line that did increase by approximately $700,000. This was made up of a slightly larger debt payment for the year and also more money to fund capital projects. For the current year, no department expenditures were significantly over budget, which does mean that the department heads are operating as approved by City Council. This next slide here is a quick breakout of the general fund's expenditures by amounts spent within each of these functions. And looking at this graph with last year's, Allen Park has remained extremely consistent. None of these pieces fluctuated by more than 2%. Unlike most local units of government, public safety did make up the largest chunk of the expenditures with about 45% for the current year. Finally, this last slide presents the general fund's fund balance for the current and prior year during the 2023 fiscal year. Total fund balance increased by just over $1 million. The unassigned fund balance represents the resources available to the city, and for 2023, the unassigned fund balance of roughly $3 million is approximately 12.4 of the total 2023 general fund expenditures. With that, we'd like to open it up to any questions you all may have.
The question from council regarding the audit. I think one of the things that was brought up in my bag... I forgot. I think one of the items that was brought up in the bag was our funding of healthcare, where we're now at 13% versus 9%. And you also compare that to 2018 when we were 3% funded. You just touch on that very briefly to show the positive strides we're making in that area.
Sure. One of the most challenging items for, you know, financial items for all cities, you know, not just in Michigan but throughout the country, is the funding of retiree healthcare. And because many communities kind of pay as you go, so when the bills come in, you pay it. And recently, we've really had to measure that liability different and really start setting aside money today so that when people retire, the funds are there to pay those expenses. And that's been, again, sort of an accounting change and a change in the way that we view that, you know, and that's really occurred over the last, you know, seven or eight years. So the city has really, really begun to pre-fund that liability. And again, what you've been doing is putting away about a half million dollars a year into a retiree healthcare trust and saving up for these future retiree healthcare benefits. And so, you know, by doing that every single year, you've seen that funding percentage of what's the liability out there versus what assets do you have in hand. You've really seen that percentage increase, and that's why you're at 13% funded, which I understand 13% funded doesn't sound great, but you've really made a lot of progress in the last four or five years when you were 3%. And many communities throughout the state and the country are still 0% funded. So I think it really just shows your, you know, commitment to funding these, you know, these legacy costs. And I think it's a great story, again, trending upward year after year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one comment, you said we're trending upwards where many communities are at 0%. Do you know where we stand? I know we're better than others, but higher than most communities or...
I would say you're probably in the majority of where most communities are, because again, I think a lot of people have just started to fund these. So I think, you know, being in the, you know, I'd say the under 40% category is most communities, and again, very few are even close to 100. But again, I think you're probably right in the middle with most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have a question. You mentioned the property taxes are up from 13.948 to 14,636, and that, if I read your report, still not back to 2007 levels? Is that correct?
So I'd have to look and see where you're at, but certainly we've seen, so I don't have the Allen Park taxable value specifically, but certainly what we saw in 2008 is a very large drop in your taxable value. And the way property taxes work is you can only go up by the less or a 5% of inflation. So you had a steep decline in 2008, '09, and it's been a slow climb back up. So we're just starting to see a lot of the communities in the downriver area get close to where you were back in 2008, 2009. So I would suspect you're close or probably slightly under, but still not fully recovered from that recession.
I'll interject, I keep a spreadsheet. And based on my data, the last time I calculated, and I think it includes this year, I'm still only at 60% of the taxable value I was at in 2007, and I'm still not paying total taxes summer and winter of what I paid in 2007 before the decline. And over since that period of time, I've saved over $6,000 in taxes that I have not paid to the city just because of the drop in the value. So I was curious to see how that worked, and we're not there, so...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. I think the consensus is if you could stay around in case any of our residents had questions or... Okay, all right. Do any attendees here have any questions they would like to pose to our auditors while they are available and we don't hold them any longer? If not, thank you very much. I'll see you next year.
Okay, thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to organizational business. We'll let them get cleared out.
Are we going to accept and file it?
Please, oh, okay. It's been a while. May I have a motion to accept and file the audit report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Need to read my agenda. Now we will move on to the appointment of boards and committees, and per the request, we will separate beautification, Board of Ethics, and Festivities Commission. Perhaps we'll go through these first and then take the rest in unison. So with regard to beautification commission, we're going to do these individually, do I ask for a motion on each of them?
Yes, and just make sure you state their term if they're going to do it individually.
No, okay. With regard to the beautification commission, may I have a motion to reappoint Kyle Walagora?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Estimer.
Sorry, motion, Mayor. Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, and this term, all terms will end December 31st, 2026 unless otherwise stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
One no. Mr. Walagora is appointed. May I have a motion to reappoint Edward Wurtzbacher?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Wurtzbacher is appointed. Board of Ethics, may I have a motion to nominate, to appoint Father Tim Bernie? His term will expire 2026.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Unless there's a conflict of interest. Or a financial interest. Yeah. I'm sorry. I thought he could. It wasn't her. Yes.
Motion is approved. May I have a motion to appoint Steve Dolan to a term to expire December 31st, 2027?
Motion.
Motion by Nancy Nick.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Dolan is appointed. Motion to appoint Mr. Kettlehut with a term to expire December 31st, 2028.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to appoint Mr. Provost to a term to expire December 2024.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to appoint Mr. Wallace for a term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You are all appointed to the Board of Ethics. We will move to the Festivities Commission. May I have a motion to reappoint Tina Rigetti?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Estimer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
I have, for the record, Nick and Schleck. Thank you.
Majority, they are, she is reappointed. May I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Walagora?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Estimer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
I have one, and...
They are reappointed. Appoint, motion to appoint Mr. Donahue, who is filling a vacancy. His term will expire December 31st, 2025.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estimer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to appoint Mr. Perata, term expiring 2026.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estimer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to appoint Mr. Wurtzbacher, term expiring 2026.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are appointed and reappointed. With regard to the rest of the commissions, on the Construction Board of Appeals, we are reappointing John Ciatti and Stephen Guerrero and appointing Jasmine Sheffield, replacing someone who moved out of the city. On the Downtown Development Authority, we are reappointing Mr. Greg Genter, whose term will expire 2027, and Mr. Kurt Mazag, whose term will expire 2027. For the Fire and Police Civil Service Commission, we are reappointing Mr. David Tringer, whose term will end 2029. On the Historical Commission, we are appointing Thomas Lozarsky, who fills a vacancy and whose term will expire in 2025, Rene Marcos, and Len Perata, whose terms will expire in 2026. On the Housing Commission, we are reappointing Cheryl McFarland, who is the resident representative, and her term will expire in 2028. On the Library Advisory Board, we are reappointing Pam Cook and Marge Laskowski, and we are appointing Megan Holman. For the Local Officers Compensation Board, we are appointing Rene Marcos, whose term will expire 2027. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we are reappointing Brad Crutz and Jim Perry, and we are appointing Jay Luke Brithony. On the Planning Commission, we are reappointing Nick Darin, Ross Smith, and Joseph Palmasano is a new appointment. On the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are appointing Jessica Tremonti. May I have a motion to appoint and reappoint the rest of these individuals?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Estimer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You are all appointed and reappointed. Those in attendance, if you will please come up to be sworn in.
Yeah.
Hide behind me. Yeah, Tina, come to the front. All right, commissioners, first of all, thank you for your service. Second of all, I'm going to swear you in. You don't have to repeat after me or anything like that. At the end, just say, "Excuse me." Don't say, "Excuse me." Say, "I do swear," or "I affirm," and then I will get you the certificates once we've been properly printed out. I'll find you, you don't have to find me. So I think I'll know where I can find you also. So I ask that you raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park free from partisan distinction or control and that you will perform your duties as the board commissioner and trustee to the best of your abilities so help you God? All right, congratulations.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight, and especially for volunteering for these various boards and commissions. I cannot tell you how much I value the time you give to our community and the time you take away from your family. you take away from your families and friends and sometimes for the abuse that you take. And, and I know that you get paid highly to do this. Again, I, I, um, you provide such a great service to, to the city and the community, and I find that these commissions and boards are an integral part of, of helping us become a better community. And I, I, I place people on these boards and commissions based on their qualifications and their willingness to do the work. And again, I can't tell you how much you are appreciated. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a wonderful holiday, whatever you celebrate, and a very happy and healthy new year. Thank you again. And if any of you want to depart before we get into the rest of the meeting, feel free to do so. I know we're crunching in on the Christmas holidays and you probably have a lot going on.
They're leaving skid marks.
Everybody.
Losing your audience, guys.
No, I know. No. Hurry up, don't go.
Some exciting.
Prize money for anybody that sticks around next time.
Gift cards.
Extra credit for the students. Where's Mr. Lloyd at? Extra credit for, extra credit for the students for sticking around.
I'll tell Mr. Bird.
Please.
I think that is extra credit.
Is it? Okay, good.
My extra action.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, you're up.
All right. Make sure we vote on my, my report this time, so.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Council, residents of Allen Park. I just wanna, real quick with Trent Olson, um, I actually do know his father as well, and, uh, Mr. Olson was actually my, uh, high school drafting teacher. Uh, I'm not too sure he ever expected to see me, uh, probably would've thought I'm more of an architect, cause that's what I really wanted to be, and not sitting here with, uh, political science, uh, degrees in public administration. Sort of an architect. It's, it's kinda like that. We, we do, we do build things here, design and build, so. But, uh, yeah, I was happy when, uh, when he, when Trent came in, he says, my dad knows you, and I'm like, oh, uh-oh. Oh, oh. And then, uh, real quick, I think we need to have some investigations done up here. So, the first council meeting that the council got sworn in, I ended up with a Michigan State, um, cookie on my table, that's my spot. And, uh, we found out that was, uh, Councilwoman Nick, uh, doing that, but tonight I have a Brandon Inge was the best Tiger ever. No.
Oh, boy.
On my, and every time I go to the game, Brandon Inge was a great ball player, no doubt. Uh, but the love that people have for him is just ridiculous sometimes. When I go to the ballgame, where I sit, I can see all the, all the jerseys, and I, all the fifteen jerseys. So whenever I see a fifteen jersey, I have to take a picture and post it on Facebook. What the heck are people doing here? So, there's no, I don't have any love for Brandon Inge. He was still was good. Nonetheless, moving on, carry on, so. Uh, just a couple of items here, uh, the newest edition of the Allen Park Today Magazine should've already been hitting your mailbox, and if it hasn't, it will be hitting your mailbox, or you can grab a copy out front. Uh, do wanna thank the, uh, the department heads and the staff for, uh, all the effort going into putting that magazine together. It is a lot of work, so we do appreciate that. As I posted on the, uh, Facebook page today, I certainly hope we do not have a, uh, a jinx or curse or anything like the Sports Illustrated Magazine, uh, jinx or the Madden NFL curse, cause the Lions are on the cover, um, that is them, uh, wearing their practice uniforms, so, uh, we, we hope we have not jinxed them. We may, we may have put the cheerleaders on from Allen Park High School, and that may have been the beginning, so. We're hoping that doesn't continue. Um, then just a, real quick, a thank you to the National Honor Society for, for Allen Park High School for their letters of Santa. Uh, we had a mailbox out in the, uh, in the vestibule, uh, it was, they said it was very successful, so we're looking forward to working with them again in twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, just some closings, uh, we're gonna be closed this Friday and Monday for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, uh, holiday, and then the following, uh, Monday and, uh, Friday and Monday also for the New Year's holiday. And then we'll look forward to seeing everybody back here in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estheimer. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. Anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so. You are limited to four minutes. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your complete address. We are open for public comment.
Where were you? Get up.
He was gonna guess someone else had changed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Real quick, I wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. To all our citizens, non-citizens, to everybody out there, just take a, you know, a couple of minutes and just look back at this past year, and we got a new, a new year coming up. You know, it's gonna be tough on some of ya, brand spanking new people, you know, but with that, I just wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Take care, have a great day.
Thank you, Ray.
Oh, by the, by the way, Ray McGus and Quonk.
I know. That's his first, middle, and last name. And the same to you, Ray. Thank you. We'll close, uh, public comments and move on to the consent agenda tonight consisting of claims and accounts in the payroll report. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is approved. Resolutions. Resolution one is to award the fire department's sealed bids for the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras and related equipment to Allied Fire Sales and Service at a price of sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars using a FEMA grant. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos.
Mr. Marcos, my, my speaker wasn't.
Chief O'Reilly.
So tonight I'm here just to, um, get, uh, have you accept the formal bid by Allied Services. This would be for the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras and, uh, hardware for the trucks. Uh, these, uh, cameras will be placed, uh, each one on one of our engines and one on the ladder. Um, our other two thermal imagers will be moved into reserve and backup use as they are older technology.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second resolution is that the mayor and council accept the American Bloom Canadian National Rail Echo Connections from the Ground Up Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for Allen Park Historical Museum and match funding for the grant, which will come from the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Capital Improvement Fund in the amount and a donation request if needed for the flagpole from the festivities commission for twelve thousand two hundred and fifty thousand, and the amount of the coming out of capital improvement will be thirty-eight five. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Support.
Second by Mr. Marcos. We'll get a brief explanation.
Yep. So, this is the grant application I, we, we ratified, or asked to have ratified last week. Um, on Wednesday morning, uh, six fifty-six AM, I received an email from our friend, um, Laura at the American Bloom, and she, uh, had congratulations for the city on being awarded the twenty-five thousand dollars. So, two years in a row, um, we do appreciate that. Um, the total project for this, uh, is going to be approximately sixty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, twenty-five thousand coming from the American Bloom CN Rail Grant, and then forty thousand seven fifty would be from, uh, the, uh, Capital Improvements Fund of the thirty-eight five, and if, if necessary, uh, twenty-two five, uh, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollar request of Festivities Commission for a new flagpole. Um, we're gonna look at, see if that's necessary now. So just looking for, uh, approval to accept that grant from the American Bloom CN Rail.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is carried. Thank you very much. Now we will come to council comments, and this evening we will start with Mr. Marcos.
All right, um, I wanna thank again, uh, firefighter Olson for joining the club and Chief, um, O'Reilly for his active recruiting methods that are really working good. I like it. They work. Um, I wanna thank all the new commissioners, commissioners, committee members, everybody that volunteered, a lot of folks, uh, it's great to see, um, and, um, I, I'm, I know that you guys will do a great job. Um, it's just so nice to see all the citizens getting in, in, in with the city and pitching in and helping and doing a lot of things that we just can't do. So, thank you all very, very much. Greatly appreciated. Uh, also, the, I wanna thank the financial staff at Mark and, and, um, Amanda. Cause those of you who don't know what an audit is like, it takes months, and not only they have to do their job, regular jobs, but then they gotta answer to these guys, back and forth, questions, get this paper, get that paper, and it's, it's, it's a lot of work for them, and, uh, again, we greatly appreciate it, and we got an A-plus rating, which is outstanding. So, uh, thank you for the work that you guys have done for the year. Um, what else? Oh, okay. Uh, and this day, in seventeen seventy-seven, you, uh, the United States celebrated its first national Thanksgiving Day. How do you like that? It wasn't always on the Fourth Thursday of November. Uh, and in this day in nineteen oh-three, the Wright Brothers, um, first successful flight in a powered aircraft at Kitty Halt, North Carolina, and that's my fun facts for the day, and thank you all. Have a great, great holiday season, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
Really cannot say much more than what, uh, Councilman Marcos has said. Thank you to all the commission members. Thank you to, uh, firefighter Olson, the auditors. Are they here? Thank you for, uh, doing all the legwork on that. Uh, just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. How are you?
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanna start by saying, like, uh, follow colleagues here, thanks to firefighter Trent Olson for joining our city, and thanks to all the new commissioners and those returning. I know what it, what it takes and what you guys go through, uh, it's definitely a tough job, but I know you will do a great job, and wanna extend my thanks to the fire department, police department, and all the departments in our city for this tough year. Can't say that enough. I know you guys do an amazing job and sometimes go above and beyond, more than I can say. So, thank you for that, and thank you for all the department heads and our staff. Uh, so, thank you very much for all that. Wanna wish everyone a happy Kwanzaa that celebrate and Merry Christmas, and have a very peaceful and loving and prosperous new year. And with that, uh, agree to disagree, but I hope everyone can, can all get along more in the new year and look forward to bright things to come. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Estheimer.
Uh, thank you, Mary. I, uh, echo, uh, my fellow colleagues' comments here and, uh, wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Ms. Nick.
Um, well, over the weekend, I went to a new res, well, it's not a new restaurant, it was new to me here in Allen Park. Um, it's on Pelham, and I have to give them a big shout-out. Um, it's Nona's, N-O-N-A, on Pelham Road. I'd never been there, they'd been there a couple of years. Um, it was over the weekend, if you guys ever get a chance, go there. I went on the weekend and they made, um, the soup, chicken dumpling soup. I thought my grandma was in the kitchen, cause it tasted just like what she used to make. And if anybody likes cakes, they have these amazing cakes, the German chocolate is fantastic. So I'd like to give them a big shout-out. Um, so, I'd never been to their business, but they'd been here a couple of years, so now I feel bad for not going. Um, but I would like to, um, thank the police and fire for working over the holiday season, um, and for working Christmas, New Year, things like that. We appreciate you, and everybody have a nice holiday season and, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, now it's my turn. Uh, before I forget, um, wanna wish, uh, Charles Blevins a happy birthday on the twenty-first, um, Chief Eden, happy birthday on the twenty-fifth, a Christmas present to his family. Um, and it's, it's very special when you have a, a new baby at Christmas time. And to Gary Schleck, who will have a birthday on the twenty-eighth. Um, we are, again, obviously very pleased to have our new firefighter. Uh, we're looking at, uh, forward to having more onboarding of our public safety officers. And I also want to thank our DPS workers, who we know will be out there, um, out, at all hours of the day and night, um, every time a water main breaks, it doesn't matter if it's Christmas, Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, um, they have to go out there and take care of it, uh, usually under less than desirable conditions. Uh, again, I will reiterate my thanks to all those of you who have volunteered to serve on boards and commissions. Um, I value you, I value your time, um, and, um, I depend on you. Thank you so very, very much. Um, I wanna wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. Again, as I have said in the past, please remember those individuals who may be your neighbors or friends, who may be going through a difficult period of time. Uh, not everyone finds this to be a joyous occasion. Um, we've had a number of individuals who have experienced losses very recently, um, and this is especially difficult time of year, so please keep them in mind.